All right, hello everybody and welcome to the March 3 work session of Borough Council. Let's begin by calling the roll.
Sure, Council President Fred Bush.
Here.
Council Vice President Michelle Panopoulos. Councilmember Barbara Fortner.
Here.
Councilmember Rob McGrady.
Here.
Councilmember Cindy Rick.
Here.
Councilmember Bob Weisborn.
Here.
Councilmember Ira Winston.
Here.
Mayor Andrea Deutsch.
Here.
All right, and I'm assured that Michelle Panopoulos is on her way and will be joining us later on via Zoom. Do we have any changes or additions to the agenda? I don't think so.
Well, it's not really a change, I just did want to note that the last item of the agenda is announcing the executive session, and I think we should probably go ahead and get that out of the way so we don't worry about it later.
Sure, so council met in executive session on March 1st, 2022 to discuss possible real estate transactions. We will not be meeting tonight in executive session. All right, let's go ahead to, I have no comments tonight. Ms. Deutsch, do you have comments for us?
I do, thank you, President Bush. Since our last meeting, there's been a little bit of unwanted excitement in the borough. I'm sure you've all heard, there was an incident on February 21st, it was a carjacking at approximately 10:00 PM. A lot of information has been followed up in the Borough Newsletter by Chief Gallagher, but for those who haven't, you know, heard about the incident, you can go and see the details in our last newsletter, but there were no injuries, and the police are currently investigating the matter and working with the Philadelphia Carjacking Task Force and others to help see if they can get a resolution to everything. There's a little bit of advice with regard to, there's been a very serious amount of uptick in carjackings in the Philadelphia region in general this year and this year. So, and being a suburb of Philadelphia, you know, you have to be aware of what's going on. So, just if you can, park in well-lit areas, lock your doors when you're sitting in your vehicle. If you see suspicious activity, please call 911 so that an officer can come out and address the situation right away, and just be aware of your surroundings. If you feel like you're being followed, please don't drive directly home. If you feel like someone's acting oddly behind you, you should drive to the nearest police station and call 911 so that you don't get involved in any bad situations. There's also been a little bit of an uptick in the stealing of catalytic converters in the Philadelphia region. In the borough, we've had three stolen this year, which isn't a lot, but it's a crime of opportunity, and I just want folks to be aware, you know, of this happening. So again, if you can park in well-lit areas, you want to do that. If you have an opportunity to etch your license plate number onto your catalytic converter, it makes it harder to sell or to turn into a dealer. That's one way to thwart a would-be thief. If you have a hybrid, you are more susceptible to these kinds of thefts because there's more valuable material in the catalytic converters of hybrid vehicles, and it makes them more valuable for people who want to steal them. So, you may want to consider getting an anti-theft device, which you can have installed on your car, which makes it incredibly hard for them to just come along and steal it. It may be worth the money to protect if you have a particularly valuable catalytic converter. In separate news, we had a loss in the borough of a very valuable member of our community last week. Andy Hackenson passed away, and Andy has done a lot for the borough of Norbert, and I just want to acknowledge his passing. He was served on Borough Council for many years. He was a volunteer fireman with the Norbert Fire Company. He served on the library board. He served in many, many different ways in the borough. And I just want to express our condolences to his two daughters, his grandchildren, and all his friends who appreciated all he did for us in Norbert. So, our heartfelt condolences to his family, and that's it.
Thank you, Mayor Deutsch. On behalf of council, we'll also share in those sentiments toward the Hackenson family. All right, let's move on to public comments. We have one member of the public in the room today. Mr. Bressi, do you have any public comment at this time?
No, sir.
Okay, so let's move on to in Zoom.
All right, so anyone on Zoom who'd like to make a public comment? If you could use the raise hand symbol on Zoom, or just actually raise your hand, I'll call on people to unmute themselves and provide public comment. All right, I see no one on Zoom who wishes to provide public comment.
All right, public comment is closed. We'll move on to item 7th Avenue Bridge update. Oh, I'm sorry, do we have any public comment online?
Oh, yeah. So, as we do now, along the packet, which is on the screen here. So, we received a letter from Lawrence Goldberg in regards to 201 Sabine, and as well included a mock-up of what the property might look like. So that full comment and that mock-up can be found on the Borough Council website with a public comment. Okay.
I think Michelle is here.
Yeah, Michelle Carroll, let's do them the name, so.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that summary of the online public comment.
No, I think she's saying Michelle Panopoulos is joining.
Right, right, thanks. Okay, so everybody's here. Let's move on to 7A, which is the bridge update.
So, if I may, I'm pleased to introduce for everyone who hasn't met her, Jen Regal from Panoni is with us here tonight. She's been the main engineer involved on the bridge project, and I think, you know, it's been really exciting seeing everything that's happened with the bridge project. I know lots of things happened before I was here, but at least in the time I've been here as well. And it's really exciting as we're, you know, working our way towards trying to get things done to put the project out to bid. So I'll turn it over to Jen to kind of talk about what we've done and where we're going, and then, you know, to answer any questions or comments that members of council have. So, thanks for being with us tonight, Jen.
Thank you Samantha, and thank you to the council for having me here. I think we had sent out an update previous to this meeting, and since then, just so you know, we did have a meeting with PennDOT on Tuesday. Can everyone hear me?
We're just gonna, we can hear you, we're just gonna adjust the screen so we can see you, so one moment. We can hear you just fine.
Technology, gotta love it, right?
All right.
There we go.
Okay.
I got a pen, hold on. Hi, there you go.
Okay, now you can hear me and see me. Okay, well, thank you again. Like I was saying, there was a pamphlet that was sent out with the progress and the remaining tasks, but we did have a meeting with PennDOT on Tuesday, and we're able to trim that down a little bit more with the schedule, so that is the good news. You know, but I do want to kind of go over that with everyone and just make sure that there weren't any questions before we move forward with that. So, like Samantha said, since she's been here, we have made progress. We were obviously making progress on the bridge previously as well, but we have gotten a couple more approvals from PennDOT, which is fantastic. We've gotten our traffic control approval and signing a payment marking approval back in October, so that is done. We are very, very close to getting our right-of-way clearance completed. We have four of the six deeds recorded at this point. We've got two remaining, one of them being Amtrak, but we have been working with Amtrak, and they do seem to be in agreeance with everything that we have put in front of them and vice versa. So it's just a matter of getting the paperwork all signed and into the courthouse. Our next big hurdle is utility clearance, so we have been coordinating that. We need to sign off on the Pico gas line that is on the bridge. It's gonna remain on the bridge, so therefore we need to work out a few more details with Pico to make sure that that is up to their standards for what they need, as well as what we need to make sure that it is safely attached to the bridge. And then I do know that we've progressed the mural design as well, which is, you know, with the SBA, who's the architect on the project. And we have started the conversations of getting the construction inspection contract in place with PennDOT. So, a lot has been going on. Obviously, the bridge design has been progressed some too, but we did kind of hit a little bit of a hurdle with that because Amtrak is actually planning an upgrade to their system, which Norbert happens to fall within. So we have had to kind of hit the pause button a little bit while we rework some things and get some adjustments made and put in a supplement to do those out of scope work items so that we can get Amtrak's approval on the design. But before I move into any of the remaining milestones and the pieces that we have to finish, does anyone have any questions thus far?
I mean, I think, you know, speaking a little bit for council here, I think our concern is that, you know, we had been announcing that this summer we were expecting to put this out to bid, and we're seeing some of these anticipated timelines. Now, that's moving out to December or early next year. So I guess the broad question is, what happened and how do we prevent any more slippages in the dates here?
No, that is a good question. Like I said, one of the big slips was the coordination with Amtrak and their project and getting the details that we needed from their consultant on that project and trying to work out what else needed to be revised in order to... It's not quite accommodating, we are compromising in both projects actually, to make sure that we get our project done for the bridge, but also make sure that Amtrak gets what they need for their upgrades as well. So, that was probably one of the bigger ones, and then right-of-way took a little bit longer than we anticipated to kind of go through that negotiation process. We thought we had enough time built into the schedule, but it doesn't appear like we did. So, like I said, the good news with that is that we're almost done the right-of-way, so there should definitely not be any more slips with that. We have been a little bit conservative with these dates that we've given to get the rest of the project done, to try to allow for review times from other agencies and a little bit more coordination and based on what we're seeing with the current, the past year or so, coordination times and review times. So, that way we can be confident that we don't have to slip the date any further than what we have currently on our current schedule.
All right, Cindy.
I guess this is more of a comment than a question, but I keep hearing you say there were slips. It's just not acceptable. I mean, we pay a tremendous amount of money to Panoni and your services, and we're a little borough who's been very patient, and we understand the complexity of this issue. I'd like this remediated. I don't want to hear, like, there's a new timeline. How are you gonna fix your slips? Or if not, who can we send, you know, whose cell phone number do we send to the neighbors? Because we get calls all the time from businesses and neighbors saying, "Explain me why this takes so long." I'm not gonna tell people there were slips, I'd rather refer them to you all so you can explain. How are you gonna remediate and expedite this?
No, that is a good comment, and I completely understand where you're coming from, and I appreciate that you guys do take those phone calls. Maybe slip is not the right word that I should be using. I mean, it is a lot of agencies, a lot of different people that are involved in all the coordination, right? I mean, we're doing the best that we can with what we have, but we are relying on, you know, property owners, lawyers, Amtrak, a whole slew of players. So, we are doing the best that we can with what we can control. You know, I mean, if we need to help mitigate some of the complaints and the calls that you're getting, you know, we can definitely, we could definitely help out with that. From the remediation standpoint, like I said, I mean, we kind of are looking at our schedule and trying to do everything we can. The right-of-way is almost done. You know, the utility clearance is close to being done as well. But there's a lot of design items that are on this bridge, it's not just a bridge. There's a very tight construction zone to work in. There's a lot of utilities. I mean, every utility that is known is basically out on that, on that bridge or around that bridge, and it just takes a lot of coordination effort. And if we need to better explain that to the public, we can definitely do that for you. In the meantime, like I said, we will try to beat the schedule that we have set, and that may not have been clear in that document that we sent over before. Again, this is the most conservative dates that we wanted to put out there so that you don't have to say that anything else changes, but we're gonna strive to beat every one of those dates moving forward.
Ira.
So, I read your detailed schedule fairly carefully, and, you know, I'm just hoping that the dates you list as early finish and early start are dates that we can meet, and if not, we want to be kept informed when you're not gonna meet one of those early starts. Because what all throughout has happened in projects like this is, people think of the late start and the late finish as the actual date, and then they strive to meet that target. And given all the history that was just described, we need to go after the early start and the early finish, and we need to be kept informed when you're not gonna meet those. And quite frankly, we'd like to see when you're gonna miss something, what your recovery plan is for making up that time so that we can meet the early targets, not the late targets.
Of course, yes.
We really need you to stay on that.
Absolutely, and if you do, if you do look at that, and I know we sent over that detailed package, the PSNE, which is the submission that we sent in before we actually advertised the project, right? So that's the PennDOT process. We do have the early and the late date is exactly the same. So, you know, along the way, I totally understand what you're saying, and in the process, you know, the critical path is the bridge. That's the thing that we will be, you know, really watching ourselves on and making sure that we do meet all those dates. But any of those other dates that, you know, look like they're not gonna be achievable for some reason, we will obviously let you guys know and let you know what we're gonna do to make sure that we make up the time and don't change any of that PSNE date.
And so the other thing that happens on projects like this is, one of the ways you can make up time is to overlap activities wherever possible. And I noticed that your schedule doesn't do a lot of overlapping. And, you know, I know that that can happen because you really need things to get final approval before you can move to the next stage. But wherever you can get creative and overlap activities, that's how you take time off a project like this.
Absolutely, absolutely, and we will do that where we can. Like I said, we are aware that the bridge is the critical path for the design approvals, so that does feed into some of the other tasks, but we will try to work ahead wherever we can and make sense so that we're not losing anything along the way.
Does anybody else on council have questions? Anybody on Zoom have questions?
I do. It looks like Barbara's hand is raised.
Go ahead, Barbara.
So Jen, thank you for that. What I'm wondering is, are there things that either council can do? I have complete confidence that whatever you're needing from the borough staff, you're getting, but if there's things that we can do or things that we can help the borough staff accomplish, we'd love to know that because we are very much invested in getting this done.
Absolutely, no, and I appreciate that, and you bring up a really good point, Barbara. You know, the borough has been doing everything that we need and above that, to be honest. I mean, Samantha's been a huge help. You know, she's got some great contacts that have been helping move some things a little bit more along the way. This solicitor that you guys have, John, he's been a great help as well, especially with the right-of-way process. So I think at this point, you know, everything that we need, we have been getting, but we'll definitely keep that in mind moving forward. I guess the only other thing, and it's a little bit further off, is, you know, the public meeting and preparing for that when the time comes. But I do appreciate the offer, Barbara, that if, you know, there's anything that the council can do, we will definitely let you know.
All right, I do have one more question. Now that I'm looking at the timeline of specific projects, you did point out that the final date, the early and late, early start, early finish, late start, late finish is exactly the same. Does that mean that you don't anticipate any way to speed this up beyond that final date?
No, so again, that final date is, I hate using this term, but I can't come up with another one, the worst-case scenario, right? So that's the latest that we would finish. We are gonna try to strive along the way to beat every other task one, and if we can beat the other task numbers or the other task dates, we can get to that final date sooner. But we do know that we have to wait until the supplement is approved before we can move forward on the final bridge design, and we do know that that is gonna take us a couple more weeks in order to get that prepared and get that back in for re-submission. So that is what's kind of, you know, the beginning of everything. Wherever we can, we're gonna beat it. And then the one thing that I should make sure that is clear as well is that we are pushing that final date as soon as we possibly can, and again, we'll continue to do so, but it is also ahead of what PennDOT has on their books. So, you know, PennDOT has a let date in June of 2023 on their books. We're gonna try to get ahead of that, we are gonna get ahead of that, let me be honest on that one. But we are gonna have to, you know, work with PennDOT a little bit more, make sure that they have the money ready, and then make sure that Amtrak is ready to do their part as well. So, we will get everything buttoned up on our end so that we can put it out, and then that may be if PennDOT and Amtrak aren't ready to actually put this project out. Barbara, that might be where we need to take you up on the offer of getting council to push where they can push. But yes, like I said, we will do everything that we can to beat the dates along the way so that we can get there sooner.
Okay, did you want to go over some of these individual items with us?
Sure, I can definitely do that. So the one that I sent you guys, you know, again, like I said, after talking to PennDOT on Tuesday, we were able to cut some review times here and there on some things to actually make the schedule get a little bit more condensed, which was good. So, our next big milestone really is obtaining our railroad clearance, which we have set as June 27th. Again, we'll try to get that sooner. We've got the final design approval from both PennDOT and Amtrak, which, you know, like I said, is not gonna be going in for at least another month or so. We're getting that back in August, at the end of August. While we're working on that, we are gonna be getting our utility clearance as well, which is not only the agreement with Pico, but getting every other utility company to sign off on it and getting PennDOT to approve that clearance document. At that point, once we have final design pretty set, we would like to host the public meeting just to kind of go over what to expect during construction, what the timeline's gonna be, what to expect as far as, you know, when things will be happening, during what timeframes, that sort of thing. And then after that, we'll be assembling and submitting that PSNE document, which is that last submission to PennDOT. In that meantime, while they're reviewing that, we'll make sure we obtain our PUC approval. We have had one meeting with PUC, but it was during COVID, so they did mention about actually meeting in the field and having a field meeting, so we are circling back with them to see if that needs to occur. If not, once our final plans are approved, we can send that through and get our approval. The project is then set to be advertised, I believe we have November 1st on here, and then the day that the bids are actually open, what PennDOT refers to, as their let date would be December 6th. So, that way we'd have everything let beforehand, which gives the contractor notice to proceed just shy of March, which is the perfect time to actually start construction because the ground is starting to be a little bit less solid, and it's a little bit better weather conditions for the contractor.
So, I see you have August 22nd as the public meeting. It strikes me as like a challenging time for us to have a public meeting. Is this a public meeting that would have to be in person, or could it be?
Well, that's the date we put on there, we are definitely flexible. I would like to get your guys' input on that because obviously that is the summer, now that I'm thinking about it, and people might be on vacation. So, really what we wanted to do, we wanted to just be able to talk to the public. We could even push that, you know, until like September, if that's easier. We just want to give them a heads up of what's happening in construction so it's not a surprise.
What about June?
June might be a little early because we do want to make sure that we've got at least a lot of our final design elements buttoned up with Amtrak and PennDOT, and then based on our schedule with that.
Well, if we don't do it till after Labor Day, is it gonna cause a delay on the project?
Absolutely not. The public meeting is not necessary in order to get this project bid. It's just there, we think, again, from what we found with dealing with the public in the past. It's been a while since we've had one here. It might be nice to kind of give them, you know, the town an update on what's gonna be happening so that they're prepared and understand what's gonna happen.
Well, doing it last week of August is not gonna help our cause.
What was that, I'm sorry?
Doing it last week of August is not gonna further that cause, so.
Yeah, not during the summer.
Okay, is there a better timeframe then, that you're saying, September?
Would be after Labor Day.
After Labor Day, okay, yeah, we can definitely move that, that's not a problem.
But just while we're on the subject, would council want to do it at the same time as a work session, or would council prefer it to be a meeting unto itself?
Well, yeah, just gonna ask a question, because we want residents to be able to do a Q and A, correct? So I would think we would absolutely do it.
Yeah, separate meeting in the big room.
And Samantha, I can work with you to figure out what the best day of the week is after Labor Day, that sort of thing, to set that.
Sorry, Jen, can you repeat what you just said, you froze for a second?
No, that's fine, I said I could work with you on what the best day is to actually have that, and then just make sure that we advertise for it, you know, the six weeks in advance.
Does anybody else have questions?
Yes, I mean, I think the key thing here is that, like, we don't want to, you point out that, like, you're really not gonna start construction, you know, until March or start in the fall, before winter, you know? I mean, I don't see that how that could happen with this schedule. So, but we just don't want to miss, we want to start it, like, absolutely as soon as we can in March.
Absolutely, and like I said, we're gonna push for that, you know, and make sure that we kind of get Amtrak and PennDOT lined up to be able to push for that as well.
When something's going off the rails, so to speak, because that's, you know, that's the challenge. If something goes wrong and we don't know about it, and the next thing you know, we lost more time, we don't want to do that. So, you just have to stay in touch with us and let us know when something's going wrong so we can try to help you.
Absolutely, we can give you guys updates regardless of whether it's, you know, of our progress. Every two weeks, like when Samantha and I meet, we'll make sure that we take a look at the schedule and make sure that we're progressing the way the schedule is showing, or again, beating it.
Right, so we should get, this schedule should get updated, like, once a month or something so that we can look at it, and that way we'll know if something's going wrong.
I wonder if it's worth creating your information materials on the webpage? It's something more than just, Samantha's been doing a fabulous job at every single week in the flash email that goes out, giving bridge updates. I wonder now if we take some of this and put it in its own information package tab on the webpage that is updated, I mean, I'm sorry, this document, like a bridge tab, and then there's every two-week progress notes. So it all doesn't fall on you, Samantha, but it's really coming kind of firsthand from Panoni.
Yeah, do we know if we do that?
Yeah.
Okay, anybody on Zoom, your council members have questions? All right, I don't see any. Okay, thank you for the information.
Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Okay. Let's move on to discussion item 7B, which is the infill zoning ordinance. All right. Let's see how to, should we proceed here? So I know, I see Todd Bressi, the Chair of Planning Commission, is in the room here. And I see other Planning Commission members on Zoom. So Todd, why don't you give us a brief reminder of the, what Planning Commission views as the importance of the infill zoning ordinance? And a little, you know, a little quick summary of it.
Okay. I may have to, thank you. I'm going to have to return to my computer for notes.
Okay, do you want to come up? Yeah, do you want to come up?
We may have a word with that council.
Probably closer to that is better.
I have a feeling you're going to do better. Sorry to put you on the spot, Todd. Since you're in the spot.
That what I don't want to do is. I'm glad it's bright blue. So thank you for inviting me to brief you. The, the context for this briefly is some time ago, a number of planning commissioners had identified the need to examine the zoning code to determine whether or not it adequately provided for small, small houses to be built. It was our suspicion that there were certain provisions in the code, particularly minimum lot sizes, that kind of create a floor on the size of buildings that could be built. And the 6,000 square foot minimum lot for single family houses in particular. So we put that on our work plan for last fall. In the intervening time, we worked very hard with council to develop the Norbert Historic District, which severely restricted people's ability to demolish houses. That we had been seeing many of those teardowns in order to build bigger houses or subdivision. Good planning practice tells you, whenever you create historic district or historic regulation, you also look at your zoning code to see what the interplay is between the zoning and historic district. And one of the things we found when we, when we looked at that was that because of the, because people had such extreme limitations on the ability to tear their houses down, they also were limited in their ability to use properties, to use their properties in ways that they might if they were not in historic district, either through subdivision or through redeveloping their property, which from a planning point of view is an issue to think about. So we tried to think about, are there ways to, are there ways to allow for people who have this new restriction, property owners who have this new restriction, to nevertheless have options for what to do with their property, which is very important in, from a planning point of view and from the, in, in the way that we regulate land use. And then the third thing that occurred, as you know, we received a proposal for 146 Marion Act, which came in right before the historic district was passed, to tear down the house and build four very large, out of scale, twins. And we thought, well, this could be an opportunity to address all these issues at once, to look at what are the ways we could revise our zoning to allow for smaller houses to be built. Secondly, how do we provide relief in our zoning code for situations where people may no longer have options for their property? And third, can we do that and also provide a better solution for that site? And so that's what we worked on for about six months. So that is the planning, planning context. The key provisions of the ordinance are to introduce a, a new housing type called the cottage. And that's an unfortunate term in the sense that it conjures in everyone's mind something different. Let's just say it's a small house. A smaller variant of the twin and a mechanism for what we call planned development, which would allow a property owner to put more than one house on a property. Right now, you can only have one house and one lot. And the reason for that would to allow more, would be to allow for more sexable, excuse me, flexible site planning. Those are the key components. And altogether, those just provide more options for people who are in this situation to, to make use of their property. As time went on, as we continued developing these ideas, we, we heard comments at council about the pace and rate of change and concerns that, you know, there might be unintended consequences of changes like this that could unleash or accelerate what might otherwise be the natural occurrence of change. And so between the time I presented this to you last and in the final revisions to the code that you've received now, we've made, we've tightened it up in a couple of important ways. One is we've made very clear in the language of the code, first of all, that it only applies to properties in the historic district in 3A, 3B, 3C zones that, that have a contributing resource that's being preserved. Secondly, we added, properties must have been subdivisible under the, under the existing zoning prior to the passage of historic district. So, so no one would be able to do something that they could not have done had their house not been incorporated into the historic district. We, we carefully looked, Jim Spear and I must have looked at hundreds of lots to kind of test this out. And then thirdly, we, we created a provision that says the number of buildings that you can create through these processes is, is limited to the number of buildings that you could have been, that you could have created by subdivision prior to the historic district ordinance. So this would allow for not only the outcomes I discussed, smaller houses, smaller housing types, but also there are a couple of stops in there that would prevent anyone from developing more houses, more buildings than they could have in advance of the historic district. That is in response to the concerns we've heard. Jim and I estimate that, that probably in the range of 30 or fewer properties could take advantage of these provisions, aside from ones that could already subdivide. There are some historic district houses that are not so big now that they could already subdivide. They could already infill without any of this. Eliminate all those. We, we estimate there's about 30 properties that could take advantage of these provisions. I think this is an opportunity to try these, these rules out for good reasons. I think when we first talked about this a year ago, we thought about applying these rules broader wide. But this would be a much more constrained way for very specific reasons that would give us much more ability to manage it. I should also say the, the provision in which that would allow someone to create multiple houses on a lot would be through a conditional use process, clear criteria that council could use to evaluate appropriateness of the application as well as the planning of the proposal. There are a few outstanding questions I've talked with some of you individually about and which have been discussed in council already, which is what is the appropriate size of these potential new houses? Are the lots too big or too small? Are the houses too big or too small? In that, in the memo I wrote to you, I think I provided the reasoning we, we, we developed from what we proposed. I would say that all the provisions in, in the proposal we submit you, submitted to you are submitted with full consensus of the planning commission, except for, there was debate with the planning commission about the size of cottages. And I enumerated in my memo the differences of thought on that. But that was the majority feeling. Potentially five out of seven planning commissioners supported the data points that are in there. So I hope, Mr. President, that is the synopsis that you were looking for.
Thank you. That's, that's very helpful, Todd. All right. So let's, let's actually start with the folks who are on Zoom. Let's go ahead the other way last time. So anybody have questions or we should discuss the issue? All right, I, I don't see anybody on Zoom, so we'll go ahead to Ira.
So Todd, you said that there are approximately 30 properties that would.
As close as we can know.
Right, okay, but my, is my understanding that not all of those 30 properties could actually hold a 2,000 square foot house? Because the lots aren't large, is that correct or not?
They could either, they could either take advantage of this provision by creating a cottage. The maximum cottage size is 2,000 square feet, so not all of them could, could have one that big. And I think the maximum lot size, the minimum lot size is 3,000 feet, but the maximum house size is 2,000. No, not all of them could.
Right, so I'm just trying to get a sense for.
Sorry, I'm sorting out your question. Not all of them could accommodate that size of a cottage, no.
Right, but I'm just trying to get it because people were nervous about the 2,000. But it's my understanding that, I don't know that the numbers, but like that, it was just like for argument's sake, they only half of them could even take something that, that size.
I'm, I'm not sure it's half, but not, not all of them.
Not all of them.
I, I went to Zillow and I found six houses in the 1800 to 2,000 square foot range. I mean, this is what they look like. They're not, they're not unusual. And, and this is, and actually you'll see that this is on a map. Grading, you'll see they're actually pretty close to each other. So what we're proposing is not totally, it's not impactors that it would be.
No, I'm, I'm not saying that it's, it's the wrong size. I'm just saying that it might not actually be the size.
Right.
In some of the cases, it would actually be a smaller scale, that's all.
That is correct.
Sydney?
So first, Todd, I guess just to state, when you say good planning, review zoning after historical preservation, I agree with you on that and appreciate your expertise in this area. And we talked after, you know, I made a motion to say, can we slow this down? And I do still feel the same. If we were a depressed community, if Norbert homeowners bought their houses and had to sell it because it had depreciated, I think that I would be more in favor for property rights over what I see as community rights of the value of kind of that open and long, long space. And I guess my final question is, has anyone since that first conversation or since that debate last month, has anyone come forward to say, wow, I'm really stuck now? I had planned to do this. Are we solving for a problem that we, aside from one property with a tremendous loss, are we solving a problem that we just don't have?
Well, you know, the other way to look at it is that we're planning. Planning is solving for problems. In fact, I will point out to you about a year and a half ago, we passed an ordinance that allows for similar provision in the 5A and 5B districts because we anticipated there might be some, particularly in the 5A district where site planning could occur better if multiple buildings are allowed on a lot as opposed to. Turns out, you know, I, I don't know if the 714 Montgomery will be on the agenda tonight, but that actually will be an opportunity. Although the, the applicant did not take advantage of that provision, that will offer an opportunity for a better solution for that site than the applicant has proposed. And so you never know. You know, having that tool in our toolbox may be, may be valuable. I'm hopeful that, that other tool will be valuable in the conversations we have about 714 Montgomery.
I, I hear it. And I guess I continue to look at, I support the transit oriented density. I, I've just been more comfortable with slowing down density, even if it's, I appreciate the restrictions in the 3D district. Because again, and maybe the community doesn't agree with me. If I am the lone soldier here, then I will obviously change my tune, but I just have a reason to slow it down.
Yeah, I'll offer another point of view. You know, with every, with every change in zoning, there's always something that's taken, either taken away from some people and there's always something that's given to others, rights that are given to others. And in the instance of, of the historic preservation rules, for, I would say for like 30 years from the ninth, from the early 90s, when people first started talking about the need for historic inventory of Norbert, until now, there was a lot of disagreement about the need for that because people were truly adverse to taking anything from anyone in this community. So I really appreciate the opportunity that this ordinance gives to people who have sort of had something that was seen for the previous 30 years as a taking, like giving something to that, to those 30 landowners who could have otherwise torn their homes down and who now have, can know that was the right to tear their homes down was now taken from them. So this is now giving them the opportunity to do something else that's, that's, that's maybe appropriate. So I have also to offer the planning commission a distinction without a difference. But I think is that, and, and it's, it comes from my thinking, I think incorrectly, that, that the cottage was not a Norbert type, but it was some kind of new type and that the basis of the form base code was predicated. The form base code was predicated on the notion that we were going to codify like what was here and only allow future development of stuff that's here. And, and for, for months I've been thinking, oh, this cottage type is some new type that never existed in Norbert before. But you've just sort of demonstrated that actually the cottage type is a Norbert type. And I think I just, the distinction I would say is like, let me call it like a Norbert cottage. And, and because it actually is a Norbert type building, it's not, we're not introducing a new type. And we're just allowing a new context within which it can be built and developed. So anyway, I appreciate the work. I appreciate how you guys went back to it and kind of recalibrated a more sort of modest version.
Go ahead.
Could you talk a little bit about what if any parking limitations or, or changes occur when you add the cottage? Or the Norbert, by the way?
There, there would be no changes in the parking requirements. So that would be another break, so to speak, on, on this because we're not pointedly saying you have to have less parking than you otherwise have. So the way you obtain parking in Norbert is you either provide it on your lot or you take a credit for the curb space on your street. You will not get more credit than you would have otherwise gotten for the curb space on your street. So the kind of natural yield is, is the same. It's unlikely that people building these small units, unless they're, you know, building a number of units on a larger property, will be able to park on the property. So they will, they will probably take off the curb space. But that's nothing different than what could have been, could have happened before the historic district was created.
So you're saying like, e- even then they would have already been able to park it, of course, because they would have subdivided and they would have.
Right. Right.
It's just, you know, there is a concern in the community about parking. And so now we're adding another house, another dwelling, and then people, the person living in that dwelling is going to probably have a car.
Yeah, you know, I, believe me, I understand that. I, I have an apartment 300 North Essex and sometimes I have to park half a block away with my groceries. I know people, that's a very, it's a concern for people aren't as able by design. So I understand that situation. What I like to say about this is I, I, I think that probably within any, you know, particular, the variations that occur in parking demand on a block are going to be much greater because of the changes of household circumstances than they are because of development. And I'll give you an example. If a family has two kids, those kids turn 16, 17, sooner or later they're going to have cars and all of a sudden you've got two more cars on that block. You know, kids go to college, they leave, two less cars on the block. So I think changes in family composition, people get married, people get divorced. You know, the Norbert families used to be huge, right? So I kind of think that there, there's going to be fluctuation in the amount of parking demand of any block all the time. And it's going to be driven by the characteristics of the households there. And so adding one more unit, of course, that's one more unit. But I think to the average person observing what's happening on their block, it will probably be indistinguishable from the kinds of changes that are happening on their, on their blocks anyway, naturally.
I guess I would just feel more comfortable with the whole thing, not wishing to make work for you, if I knew where these 30 properties were. Well, I mean, because that's what we're voting on. We don't know where they are.
But you can imagine, you can kind of imagine because it's like the larger lots and it's the houses that are in historic. and it's the houses that are in historic, historic zone, and so it's like a larger open block, it's really. It would have been, where you can imagine where somebody would have been able to tear their house down and build two.
Right, I just don't, I'm not, I just don't, but I guess, I guess your point is, like, if they're on a larger lot, then there's more, probably more parking on that street.
More curb space.
More curb space.
When you say open lawn--
And it's only in 3A, B, and C, which is like the real parts, right?
Yeah, that's right. Although, you know, 3B is also--
Oh, all of stuff.
That's 3B.
A little bit 3C.
All right, I did have some concerns over the, some of the lot size and square footage allowances. So I was looking at, if we just treat the cottage lot, this 3,000 square foot lot is its own thing, most of the houses in Norbert that are built on lots between, say, 2,500 and 3,500 square feet, they're smaller than 2,000 square feet. There are, I get, about twenty-eight lots of above that size with single-family housing, and two of them are 2,000 square feet or bigger. So most of them are smaller, the average is about 1,600 square feet. So if we were just treating this as its own entity, not as part of this larger thing, you know, that would be significantly larger than the average in Norbert. And with the twins, the--
Could I respond to that, or would you like to?
Yeah, well, let me just--
Sure, go ahead.
Well, you're saying, what you're saying is like, the maximum cottage size allowed on the minimum lot is bigger than what we experienced in Haverhill. So yeah, that's probably true. But I don't think on the minimum-sized lot, you would normally get the maximum-sized house. I mean, you'd have someone to go lot by lot and see, and know what the width of the lot is, what the setbacks are, how wide your house could be. I also, I also think that, you know, Norbert houses are, you know, the ones in historic district were built before 1945, and so they tend to be smaller, built for, you know, the times when people built smaller houses, and it's not unreasonable to allow for slightly bigger houses now, because that's, that's the, that's the way that people live. I mean, that's the core of the debate we have at the Planning Commission, is the two of these houses, for what's a reasonable, reasonable size to expect. So that's, I think you would, you would not see a 2,000 square foot house on a 3,000. The other thing is, 2,000 square feet would be in several, in two stories or two and a half stories. So the floor plan of the house would not be 2,000 feet on a 3,000 square foot lot. It might be 1,000 square feet of a lot. So those are dynamics, at a certain point, it gets to be hard to really, you know, predict how, what someone would do when they could do a lot. But I think that, I think that, I think that, you know, the house size itself is right squarely within the average. The other reason we came up with 3,000 square feet is, you know, in a 3B district, if you have, if you have a lot, you can, 3,000 square feet is actually the benchmark amount of square feet you need for dwelling in it, if it's a multifamily house. So in a way, we're trying to equalize that, and say, look, we don't want to, we don't want people to kind of just start converting their houses to multifamily houses, because that's the only way they can make use of their lot. I think that, that has a kind of impact on a lot as well. And so by using that same metric, if you can use 3,000 square, if you need 3,000 square feet to have a multifamily house, then we can say, well, why don't you just split off that 3,000 square feet and create a house? Then I think that's a win for the community in a certain perspective. I understand, you know, the open space issue certainly, it's certainly an important issue, but, so that's the other way we came up with 3,000 square feet, to equalize the map a little bit.
Yeah, I think, I think the 3,000 square foot figure makes sense in my mind, but I think that the, the size of the house is higher than what we're seeing in Norbert, that's my concern, my primary concern. But when we're talking about lot size, so the twin proposal, which is 1,750, right, 1,750 square feet per twin house, that's also smaller than we have in Norbert, really. There are, I think, I had, I think there's like ten twins in all of Norbert that are on 1,750 square feet or fewer. It's really a small number. It's ten out of several hundred. I can get that number for you in a second. So again, I feel like that is, it is ten houses, scroll down, it's a lot of twins in Norbert. Ten out of 381 are almost that small. So, you know--
Six, my question about that is, what would the concern be about allowing smaller houses? If we have controls that say you can't build more dwelling units than you could otherwise build under the current situation, what would they, I mean, smaller houses means potentially more, what we're trying to describe kind of a menu, right? This would be the smallest house you could build, because you only need 1,750 square feet. So what's wrong with allowing smaller houses?
I guess, I guess when I was looking at this originally, you didn't have that rule in there that you can't put more units in than you could before. So that's in there, so now--
And that's in reaction to the concerns we've heard. What we really did is, we tested these rules against some big lots. We thought, holy cow, someone get eighteen units on that big lot, which we thought wasn't appropriate, because they couldn't do that now. So we, we worked to develop one which that would--
All right. So to play devil's advocate, this allows subdivisions. So you subdivide off one set of little twins, and then you subdivide off another set of little twins afterwards. Right? You do, you do it two at a time, or three, sequential, basically.
Well, first of all, you still would need the parking, so you'd have to be able to, you'd have to be able to all of a sudden go from one parking spot to five, if you bring that subdivision. And secondly, well, I mean, it would also need that kind of frontage on the street, right, to be able to do that. So I'm not sure that would have really occurred very much. I mean, the fact, I mean, that is--
Well, I, you know, again, I had considered the other rule that you can't add more units than you could have subdivided before, you know--
I mean, if that is, that is a concern, that's probably something that could be addressed by saying, you know, if you take advantage of this, you have to create a, you know, a kind of an easement or something, extinguishing it with a subdivision, you know what I mean?
One of the--
You know, I would, I would imagine that would be something that could be, I mean, there are all kinds of, you know, easements and things like that, that developers make for other kinds of circumstances. Like, you know, the borough has the right to fix up sewage system and things, you know, but I'm sure that could be, that's, that is a circumstance that concerns me.
I don't, again, I'm just coming up with this right now. I don't know if it's a realistic issue, but it does sound like it could be--
You'd need, you'd need eighty-eight feet of a lot width, because I think twenty-two is the minimum, plus whatever the lot width is of the original house, plus its setbacks, or its side setbacks, right, which is at least fourteen feet. You'd almost need a 120-foot lot to do what you're saying.
Okay.
And that would be if the house, the existing house was hit perfectly. And that's if it could only be subdivided into five units. You're saying it would happen sequentially. So I don't think that would, most, most house, most lots we've learned that are big are not big because they're frontage, they're big because they're deep, you know, like on windward, 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 sorry. That's what we tend to see. There are a few that, you know, for the big, there's one at 413 Haverhill, which goes way, way back. But its lot width only allows for three units on the street. And that's what you tend to see. You don't tend to see big, long, wide lots with not a lot of depth, which is what would enable what you're talking about.
All right, I want to get to your bottom line, initiate that. Anybody else have more comments here?
See Barbara's hand raised?
Okay, thanks Barbara, go ahead.
Sure. Before I make my comment, Todd, you just mentioned, I think, twenty-two feet as the minimum lot width for a twin house, but the ordinance says twenty-five, and I know I'd asked you about that once. It still says twenty-five, and I don't know if that's intentional, so I'll just point that out for you to take a look at. But the thing I wanted to, just to make sure I'm understanding, and I think I have this right, is that what this would do is sort of restore a right that was taken away by the historic district ordinance, that under that, before that ordinance was put into place, these people had a right to subdivide their lot and put something in on that new lot, and that this ordinance is allowing them to do that, because the intention of the historic district ordinance was not to take that away, it was to make sure that the contributing historical resource couldn't be torn down or significantly altered without someone getting approval. And so from that perspective, I feel very comfortable, if I've got that right, and Todd can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think I've got it right, I'm very comfortable then with this ordinance, because I think, I just think that's not, a historic district ordinance shouldn't be the way you take a right away that's not connected at all to the contributing resource. That bothers me a lot. I'm also a little concerned in thinking about, well, we want to do this so we maintain open space. You know, that's like saying to a private property owner, we want you to bear the cost of that open space for the rest of the residents of the borough, and that just doesn't seem fair to me. If we're going to allow people to build on, to subdivide any lot, then we are saying to them, we're not expecting you to maintain that open space for the borough. I don't see how we can say that to some people, but not to others. And, and I, I think really, you know, if you want more open space, we should be looking for, you know, if the borough feels that strongly they want that open space, they should be buying that open space, and on behalf of all the residents, and where all the residents would be paying for it. So anyway, that's, that's my two thoughts. And so Todd, you can correct me if I'm interpreting this ordinance wrong, which I might be.
I'd say that's more or less correct. I mean, the clarification is, before the historic district ordinance was passed, people had the right to tear down their house and subdivide, which they do not have now. You can still subdivide if your lot is big enough, but that's not, that's not always the case. And in terms of the open space, I personally agree with your comment, that is not something the Planning Commission has weighed in on, but I personally agree with that. I think that, I think that there is much more the borough could do to manage its open space through other codes, like its landscape code, like its stormwater code, to make sure that the open space we do have is more productive and environmentally valuable. I mean, we have lots of open space that's lawns, and quite frankly, that's about as ecologically good as asphalt. So I feel like that although the quantity of open space certainly could be impacted by infill, there's a lot we could do to make our open space more, more productive and more valuable from a habitat, ecological function point of view. And I would, I would certainly look to that in any case, whether you move this ordinance forward or not. I think that should be a big, big priority for the boroughs, to look at its open space, and not just how much there is, but what it is.
All right, Cindy?
Can I just, Barbara, you've helped, I think, really kind of clarify my thinking. Just as we said in the historical preservation, that a building, a dwelling, is a contributing community resource, I'm thinking as a lawn or a lot, as a contributing community resource. So that's how I'm framing it, that when I walk down the street and I see a giant lawn or a lot, that is just as much of a contributing community resource as the building or the dwelling. So that's just kind of me framing on how I'm seeing this, is that is just as important as the business, as, I'm sorry, the building. And Barbara, I hear you, that it should not bear on property owners who could have subdivided anyway, because I think that's important, Todd, that, that we should, we should not put that, that burden on them and should think about green space. But I just wanted to contextualize my thought process.
All right. Let me see, Michelle or Rob, I don't think you've spoken, do you have anything you want to say about this right now?
I--
All right, Rob.
Yeah, just that, in addition to what Todd outlined, we could also be looking at our Shetree ordinance, which is something that I know the Shetree Commission is working on. So, you know, yeah, there's a whole kind of set of policies that we could work on in conjunction with this.
All right, thanks, Rob.
I will add, Mr. Magravian, in response to that, in this final draft, the current draft you have, we did work out language with a solicitor in a planned development situation, which is a conditional use process, that there's flexibility for council to ask that the development be configured to minimize the loss of specimens, that the metrics of zoning setbacks, built-to-lines and all that could be adjusted if that meant a better outcome in terms of tree preservation, which is, you know, very hard in a typical subdivision process, where the rules are kind of hard to adapt.
Okay. All right, so I think everyone's spoken. So we're not, we're not voting on this here, we don't have a motion to advertise at this time, but we do need to give guidance about whether we're going to proceed to have that motion. So I think I know where Cindy stands. Does anybody else object to us moving forward with this? Okay. So I think they're going to move forward. I am going to make a recommendation that we lower the maximum lot square footage of the cottage to 1,800 square feet, to go down from 2,000 to 1,800, which I think is more in line with buildings of a similar nature in Norbert. What do people think of that? Anybody?
I support that suggestion. That is really, I did not comment on this ordinance because it's very complicated, and I think everybody really captured all sides, pros and cons, very, very well. Barbara, in particular, I thought your comments were, can be very clarifying. But I do, I do agree with you, Fred, that if you look at what we currently have, that's, that's just a little bit beyond even the large size, sort of, that's sort of a little bit beyond the large end of what we currently have on lots of that size. So I'd be more comfortable with your revision.
Okay. All right, I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing any other objection to that, so let's, let's move forward with the rest of the text. More or less, as it is, lower that number to 1,800 square feet.
If I may, could we double-check that number on the lot width for twins? That counts a member for it there.
By all means.
Just to make sure that what's in the ordinance reflects, I'll go through the notes and make sure that reflects what we decided.
Yeah, I did not mean to, to remove that. I don't think I fully understood it as the problem, but please satisfy that concern.
Just make sure that ordinance accurately reflects what the Planning Commission recommended.
Right, and I don't think there were any other comments, probably counsel, that would change the text of the ordinance.
I mean, I do think we should give Mr. Bressi a chance to discuss a little bit, because there was a fairly extensive conversation at Planning Commission about the 1,800 versus the 2,000. And so there were some reasons why 2,000 was chosen, you know, by a, you know, five to two vote. So maybe we could just at least let him express--
Okay.
--what, what the nature of that discussion.
Well, I think we did encapsulate it in our notes to you, and I think I kind of hit on it earlier, is that we looked very carefully at the kind of distribution of housing sizes, and what kinds of housing sizes we thought would be appropriate. And we found that most of them were in the 1,800 to 2,000 square foot range. A few were larger than 2,000 square feet, but the 2,000 square feet seemed to be a reasonable, reasonable cutoff, given, given that. So sort of a comparison of what we found in the data, you know, from the county versus looking at these houses in the borough. And the debate, you know, hinged on who, not hinged on, but, you know, a subtext to the debate was families versus singles or couples-- families versus singles or couples or elderly. And the thinking was providing opportunity for, you know, ADUs that would support singles and potentially elderly or couples, that this would be an opportunity for a small, like a starter house for families, right? That's what the niche of this house would be. And then having something on a slightly larger size of what the range was that we thought was appropriate would, would, would fill that niche. So that's really how we, how we thought about it.
Yeah, I just wanted to get it on the left.
Okay. I'm still on 1800 here, so.
I guess I'm, and I think I'm glad that I would ask for some more clarification on that because my tendency as it was with ADU was to sort of like go to the smaller size. And, and so I think I agree with you on this one as well, but I'm, I guess I will learn a little more about. Tell if this is accurate. I'm thinking that the homes along, say, Hampden in the, in the connected, the two-story midrows are probably 1,200 square feet, maybe if you include basements. But I know the homes, say, on Wayne Avenue, the large homes, the porches on Wayne Avenue are around 2,400 square feet. Those are three, those are three or four bedroom homes. And the homes on Hampden and Connected Midrows are, are the two-bedroom homes. And I think of a starter home as something that's really maybe like more in the two-bedroom range. And I think that's really such a, I think that's a really admirable goal to think of like, how do we create more starter home options? Given that even starter homes in Norbert have become so costly that they've become forever homes for many families. So I guess I'm just, I'm also of a favor of kind of trending smaller.
Yeah. Okay. All right.
Yeah, I appreciate that comment because again, I'm more comfortable with than not to ravenous versus property rights, you know, property owners' rights versus, again, the signage of how are we creating starter homes for families? I appreciate you saying that.
All right.
Thank you for this conversation. And this is a very good conversation about our values and our goals. And it's, it's great to bring these things to council and have this conversation. So we appreciate it.
Let's stick around, Todd. Okay, next item on the agenda is Norbert Town Square. So.
Is Dave Brower on this here?
Uh, he is not.
So Jim Spear is following.
Jim Cornwell.
Jim Cornwell, it's a Jim.
The borough manager I've been working on.
Okay.
Yeah, so, yeah, somebody will speak to this one. So, you know, there was a discussion at the Planning Commission meeting in February about the concept of doing some new design work on the property currently known as a station circle. I think there's some, some conversation still to have. The hat is whether Town Square or Town Center might is a better sort of redesignation for it. And as part of that, I'm very grateful to Dave Brower and Jim Cornwell, who, you know, put together a memo for council tonight that laid out a process that we could potentially follow to do this redesign. It's something that's in the borough's comprehensive plan. And hence, there is some money allocated in the 2022 borough budget for the creation. Really only enough money was set aside for the creation of a site plan. And the reason for that is I'm very grateful for borough volunteers on the planning commission, like Dave and Jim, who, you know, kind of have some suggestions on how to go through a process otherwise the borough would have to pay someone, you know, to be involved with. So that memo is in your, you know, is in the packet here for tonight. And like I said, there is, if we follow this memo, there is probably enough funding in the budget already for this year to go through this process it's outlined. And again, being the end goal of having a town center, which I'll note, the Montgomery County Planning Commission actually released in their newsletter that got sent out earlier this week, some suggested transit-oriented development design guidelines. And in that, they actually refer to the train station here in Norbert as a town center. And I think that'll be a helpful resource for this, for this process as well. So I'm happy to do my best to answer any questions since we don't have Dave or Jim with us here tonight. And we have to see what council, if council wants to move forward with this.
May I jump in a little bit, Samantha?
I'm sorry, all right, Michelle, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I don't want to jump in. I just, I've, I've met with Jim and Dave about this a couple of times. Am I? Are you guys hearing me okay? Because I'm sounding a little funny to myself. Okay, all right, thanks. And so I think, hopefully, everybody's had a chance to take a look at that memo to sort of understand that they've got a pretty clear sort of timeline. They're looking to do sort of do this in, by leading a public design charrette process over three meetings, beginning in mid-April and going through the end of May, with the idea that what they end up with at the end is something that's called a pre-schematic, right? So it's really, I mean, if you know what a public design charrette is, a design charrette, basically, it's a collaborative process. So interested residents who want to participate would, would come, they talk through sort of vision, and then ultimately actually literally sketch out ideas for a town center. And it's a very sort of creative and energizing process. And then what, what planning commission volunteers have the skills and the willingness to do, if we will assign them this project, to sort of bring those ideas together, sort of describe them in a pre-schematic form, okay? And then present them back to the public and discuss them. And then at that point, we sort of, sort of, they would be handing the project over at that point to site planners. And so the idea of doing the process, I mean, we could just hire, you know, a designer to do this from the beginning. But the thinking was that we have such rich experience on our planning commission. And oftentimes, we think of our planning commission as being, you know, well, what, what, what we just, what we just talked about at length, right? Zoning revisions, subdivision reviews, land use regulation. But it is the planning commission, right? And I mean, fundamentally, their, their primary activity, properly conceived, really is planning. So this gives them an opportunity to go back into that role in a little more depth. It's really wonderful that we have the ability to thereby have a process, I think, that they would lead that has a little bit more buy-in and integrity because it would be sort of a, from, from the grass up, you know, it would be something that, that really relies upon and develops the ideas of people who live in this community, both the public participants and the facilitators in this case. So that's why I'm pretty excited about this, and I hope that everyone will, will agree that this is a great thing to give the green light to. And I also wanted to mention just that it's not just Station Circle. The reason this isn't being called Station Circle redesigned, but instead being called Town Center Planning or Town Square Planning, the branding is like in flux, is because the idea isn't that this is just to redesign a station circle. They're very clearly thinking about the area that goes all the way to the station, all the way through across Havford Avenue, all the way to the other side, and even expanding slightly outward towards Essex and Forest. I mean, they're going to be inviting the public to consider that entire area and how it could serve as something much more central, like a real center of gravity for our town, which is something that, that we're lacking, even though we have a great, we have a great potential for that, right? Because we have this lovely Main Street downtown that's so rare, that really is the center of our life here and doesn't have like a, a lot of traffic cutting through it. But we, the one thing we're lacking is sort of that well-designed town center, town square, that can be the center of gravity. So it would be a little bigger than Station Circle, the process of what they're envisioning. You know, and I think that's all. So I, I, yeah, any questions? I wish that Dave could be here tonight, but I have spoken with them, so I might be able to also help field questions.
So just to lay out what we'd be sort of committing to if we went forward with this is we'd be, it'd be a fair, a lot of time for the planning commission members who'd be working on this. Samantha, John Walco, and Eric Johnson would also be involved along with, you know. So we'd be committing staff time, we'd be committing a planning commission time. And, you know, once we get to the point where we have a finished or a product from the, from these design charrettes, we'd be hiring somebody to turn it into a, a product that we can, that we can do, right? So there's time and there's money involved in this process, although it's less than it would be, less money than it would be if we hired a consultant to start with.
Yeah, definitely. And to, also to clarify, I think it's on the, it's on the sort of the Gantt chart, but that, I think planning commission would like to, like for us to start the process of finding an appropriate site planner, like now in the coming months, through like a competitive process, which would, would come to council to select the right professional so that they can actually co-participate in the third meeting and have a smoother handoff. So we would be looking to sort of bring that, bring those folks, at least have them hired and selected, albeit we wouldn't be paying them right away, but, but at least have them on board.
Okay, I think Bob had a comment way back.
Yeah, no, I had a comment question, but I'm so glad that you spoke, Michelle, because you, your final comment had to do with the scope of the site. And that was like sort of where my question was going because I, I feel like it's really critical for the planning commission to, to consider the beyond just station circle. So I'm so delighted to hear that that's the way they're conceiving of it as, as kind of like the whole, the whole, sort of that whole entire public space. My, and then, and then I just wanted to say I'm fully in favor of this. I really am excited by this chart, this timeline chart, that shows the overlap between the the public process that's facilitated by the planning commission members and the, and the council's task to hire, to hire a planner to kind of work towards the tail end to, to kind of flesh out and finalize those ideas. So, you know, fully in favor of this, very, very excited about it, look forward to a participation.
Okay, I think I see Rob's hand up. I think that's Rob.
Yeah, um, yeah, thanks to the planning commission. I'm very excited about this as well. And I do think we're, we're in a really good position as, you know, many of us were involved in the different charrettes held by graduate students in landscape architecture at Temple. We have many, many drawings already. And also, we've seen ourselves, for ourselves, you know, at the corner of Forest and Havford where Cadence was, we saw how that space was used, you know, at, at public events. And so the timing is right, you know, now that the, now that the apartments are going in there, the construction's begun, we, we need to develop the space that we do have downtown. And in some of the conceptual drawings that the architecture students had done, Bob and Michelle, you'll remember, you know, there was that Wernoff concept that extended with a kind of raised crosswalk. I mean, it was an extended kind of raised section of Havford Avenue that extended Station Circle across the street. And so, you know, the other piece here, we've been talking about raised crosswalks downtown for public safety. So I just think the timing is right to bring all this together. And I'm thankful to the planning commission. So I would support it.
Thank you, Rob. All right.
Yeah, so you know, generally supportive of the initiative. I'm just a little bit worried about, you know, what other activities the planning commission had for this year that we might have to forego because they're doing this? Or are these two, is it really just these two members of planning commission doing this for?
Well, Todd, are there workflow concerns here?
Well, I just also remember having, having gotten the accessory drawing unit here to fill zoning off our plate, we were planning on hiatus for three months to rest. Now, we don't have, and also, you know, we've, we've been going full bore the last year funding these ordinances. And so we don't really have a next item on our agenda. We do have a couple of important land use reviews on the horizon that will probably occupy us. Personally, I'm going to be quite busy this spring. That's why I asked Jim and Dave to kind of lead this effort. So I don't, I don't think it will. I don't, aside from supporting the borough manager and the Montgomery County Planning Commission with the Saldon revision, I don't think that this would force or resolve in us delaying anything we were planning to do.
Yeah, and just to address the comment that President Bush made was that the staff impacted this, you know, the chats I've had and the things I've reviewed from Dave and Jim, I'm really grateful for the amount of effort they're putting into this. And I think they kept it at a level where staff can reasonably support them and be able to, you know, not take away from the things that we otherwise need to be doing from Borough Council. And again, with the money part, like I said, it is, the, any costs have been budgeted. And I do think, I do think there is some opportunity for our planning budget where if it goes a little bit over, where we have some flexibility there. We budgeted 5,000 for this project. We also had budgeted 15,000 for active transportation planning. However, based on the conversation that I think public health and safety is going to have tomorrow with Panone, I think that may or may not happen this year. I think that's going to be part of a bigger traffic study for the borough, but that'll work its way through public health and safety to council. So the short answer is the money, I think, is going to be there for this.
Equally excited. And I would say to echo Rob, not only is it ideal timing, but I think it's critical timing as we think about post-COVID recovery, both from an economic development perspective, but also just from a social health perspective. To be investing in places that we can all matter in a community is, is fantastic.
Barbara, I think you have a better view.
I'm just in agreement with what Cindy was saying, and I think this, I'm just really thrilled about this because I saw one of the presentations from the Temple students of what this area could be. And there's so much potential there, and I'm so excited that the planning commission is willing to take this on.
Yeah, I was also at one of the Temple students' presentations, and there's a lot of possibility. I agree. And I think they were excited to kind of work with it and had some great ideas. And I look forward to seeing what the, what the Norbert community has to say about this. So it seems like everyone's in favor of moving forward with this. So I'm sure we'll be hearing some more as this progresses. Looks like real soon now.
It sounds like yes.
Yeah. So this, all right. And Todd, while you're here, we have the annual planning commission report as an information item, 8A. So while you're at the table, I'm not sure, do you want to summarize or shall we just see if we have questions?
This is, this is a legal requirement that we became aware of. The borough office, that each year the planning commission must make a summary of its activities, submit that to council, so that that's what's here. It's prepared by Jim Cornwell. She should give him credit for doing that. It simply, you know, lists the applications for redevelopment subdivision and the long-range planning and the projects that we worked on. You know, most of what we do is documented or luckily reports to you and Vince. So if that the public is interested in any of these matters, they can go back to our archives and learn more.
Right. And this report is in the packet for this week's meeting. Does anybody have any questions about the report? All right, seeing none. Okay, thank you, Todd.
Thank you. We also appreciate the, the confidence from us in asking us to work on. Nothing planning commissions like to do better than do good work for council. So we appreciate being here.
Okay. So the next item is the Montgomery County Recovery Office Funding Opportunity. So I will, I think, take the lead because I've been looking into this. So just like Norbert received money from the federal government for stimulus or pandemic recovery, Montgomery County has also received a substantial amount of money. And they've decided that they're going to distribute the money to groups and municipalities within the county. They're going to do it all this year. The window for submitting projects is, it ends at the end of April. And they have like $160 million to distribute nationwide. They are looking for projects that are focused on communities that have, communities and groups that have been affected, strongly affected by the pandemic and disadvantaged groups as well. as well. So in looking at this, you know, I've been talking with some, with, with folks on council and with Samantha, and I think our best opportunity is to focus on the downtown business community, which has been strongly affected, you know, by the COVID pandemic. We've seen a lot of stores shut down, you know, we've seen, you know, we have a lot of empty storefronts right now. And I think this is an opportunity to bring more people into the downtown and to, you know, get some funding for some of the projects that we've been talking about for a while now. So some of these projects have been coming through the FNA committee in terms of downtown development. So I know, you know, Cindy's brought us things like the, so we've got the program in place to allow businesses to, to build COVID improvements, where we are contributing to support COVID safety improvements. We've got the, we've got plans to pick up some nicer dividers to put into place to protect outdoor dining. We have, what else do we have? I think we've talked about that could go into this.
We could expand the grant matching program that we started at COVID, where any, any built environment, like the outdoor dining, that we could expand this to grant matching from whether it's awnings to ADA accessible, pedestrian safety to increase walkability, assistance in economic development strategies.
Also, if I may, there's also the contribution the Borough is, you know, making to the NBA to support community events, which is also, you know, training a lot of people here.
All right. So I've got my list. I think we could also try to make a case for some of the downtown events that we, that are, that are currently the NBA pays for. We could pay for those, cover some of the police overtime. Let's see, enhance parking enforcement in the downtown, enhanced wayfinding, tree planting in planner boxes, kind of improving the setup there. There are, so these are things that we already kind of are doing, or already have in the process, but I think we could claim that these are the, we could see if we can find for those, and I have a couple other.
Sorry to, sorry to interrupt, just the mayor has had her hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Andrea. Go ahead.
So I am acutely aware, being a business in the downtown, that the challenges faced by are the small businesses in our downtown. I would just be, be really, be mindful that we have a whole separate business district of, full of small businesses on Montgomery Avenue. And having had my business out there for 13 years prior to being in the downtown, I can tell you that they often feel neglected by the, by the Norworth community. And so I would, they've struggled too. There's restaurants out there, there's small businesses, there's pretty much not a small business around that hasn't felt the impact of, of COVID and restrictions. So I, I would say, please be mindful of the entire district out on Montgomery Avenue and, and side streets, who are also struggling and could also use help with these funds and, and ways to help their lives be a little bit easier. Because, you know, we don't want empty storefronts out there either. That doesn't help the community. So, so I would just, you know, ask that, that they be considered in any kind of projects. And, you know, maybe you can set up an offshoot of the Business Association, you know, that covers that, the second business district. But I think it's really, really crucial that they not be neglected when making plans for these funds.
Okay, thank you. And I think we can make sure, okay, go ahead, Ari.
So I'm just looking in the packet, and I believe there's a, a different proposal there about $670,500 going towards Stormwater.
Oh, yeah, sorry, clarification about that. So when I first saw the, the program overview, that seemed like the most relevant program to me. However, as I noted in the memo, so thanks for clarifying this, the scoring rubric came out, like basically over the weekend. And once we actually got to see the scoring rubric, it doesn't look like that proposal would score very high. And I think the proposal from, from our council president, I think, would be much more competitive.
That was never my question, which one is more appropriate for the scoring.
Yeah, because they're, they're really focused on the pandemic impact. They want, they want to target, you know, they want you to find something that, you know, either an underserved community or something that's had a, a strong impact from the pandemic for recovery.
Yeah, yeah.
Businesses are. All right. So I do want to, so these are all things we've kind of talked about, and we've, we've had discussions over. I do want to propose two possible things that which could be incorporated in this grant. That would be things we haven't really talked about in great depth. One is a, sort of an academic development employee who would be a part-time person to work on business retention and, you know, attracting, you know, branding, work on, work on sort of building a cohesive business district and making sure that, you know, our storefronts are occupied, we've got a, a good, you know, brand for the community, that sort of thing. I mean, we should be able to get salary funding for a position for several years. This grant would go through 2026, I believe. So we could ask for, you know, a professional to be brought in for business development for, four years, let's say, and then decide at that point whether we're going to continue with that.
But, I mean, I guess a bunch of us remember the presentation from the Main Street person, and we were not, I think the general consensus was that, like, we weren't, like, we weren't sure that was a great fit for Norworth. So that's my concern, is like, would it, how would this be different than that? I mean, I'm not saying that, it wasn't about the person, it was about.
The model.
The model.
Yeah. Do you want me to understand that? So that was Donna Harris's Main Street manager, which you're right, we did all walk away saying, we, we really have this established, which is why intentionally that's not what we're asking for, is the Main Street manager, but rather more of like a retail recruitment, a business developer. I actually spoke to Ed Ridgeway today to just kind of discuss this and to say that we're not being duplicitous here. And he agreed, no, that is not the charge of the NBA. Yes, that is a need that we have in helping with recruitment, support, and areas beyond what that Main Street manager suggested, which was, how do you have a community event? How do you start a relationship with the community? Which we were well past that. But this would be almost the later end, not a Main Street manager, but a business development coordinator that would work with that NBA. What you do see in other communities that have such, they really are only three or four years. I mean, folks come in, they get stuff started, establish systems and processes in place, and then there's a natural offering. So it's not as if we're investing in something in this grant money, and then we're going to lose steam.
Right. But, I mean, to what extent? I, I just don't know if I'm asking, would they have influence over properties owned by private property owners?
So actually, Erin Newdrick and I spoke during the pandemic to a business district coordinator, she actually was Passions and then Trish Towns, and said, like, here's where we are. And she agreed, yeah, yeah, you don't need a Main Street manager. But things like retail recruitment is something that someone can bring in. She's actually the one that helped give us, kind of sparked the idea of that matching grant, kind of idea.
Thanks, Ruth. So in my previous employment, I worked with a, not a Main Street manager, but a business development coordinator for, you know, five years. And he'd been working there even for a couple of years before that. And, yeah, I would say overall, I felt, especially in this case, that brand funding would pay for it. I thought it was a beneficial thing in terms of, you know, this is someone who would, you know, go to business events and new people in the business community, and be able to kind of almost serve as a clearinghouse of sorts in terms of, oh, hey, I know this person's looking for a spot, you know, to do a new business. I know this person's looking to expand their business. I know these are the available retail opportunities in the municipality. So I think it's just someone who has the time and the connections to connect people who need business space with realtors and places that need businesses to fill at the spots.
And to go to Andrea's point, this is, you know, we, we could make sure that the businesses on Montgomery can also receive the attention of this person. Though they may, they're less in our, in our, in our thoughts right now, just because we don't have somebody advocating for them. So this would be someone who could also take care of those properties.
I'd like to see this by way of buy-in from the property owners, cooperation with the property owners, that we ask for some kind of match in contribution for this position. And also, I think, we kind of need to have a, kind of a job description, a scope, because, you know, there aren't that many vacancies currently in the downtown. There's not, there are, there are already certainly like a great number of, say, retail, what do you call it, brokers, or retail salespeople out there, like, working on behalf of the property owners to find a good fit. And I think, so, you know, this is a full-time position that we're sort of staffing. This is kind of a, some help coordinating. Yeah.
I guess, mind me, I think that's a good point you bring out, that, you know, there are private, like, you know, anyone who has an empty space, they generally have hired their own person to do it. I guess, I don't know if this is a perfect analogy, but I'll just say that, again, in my prior employment, there was a shopping center there owned by a large, you know, shopping center, a real estate investment company. And part of the challenge was, you know, they, you know, they have like 20, 30 properties that they're trying to market and fill. And so a small municipality in one of their smaller areas wasn't their top priority. Whereas for the business development coordinator, he was working for the Borough, and so that was his top priority, was to fill space there. If that makes.
It does. I mean, I wonder if they could also partly work on commission basis in the same way that, that people who do lease, lease commercial space often work on commission. You know, maybe it's a kind of a combination of, of sources of funding for this position that we could work, work out. But I do, I like the idea. Also, I just, I never got to comment on this, the first package of thoughts that you put out there, that I know we've been discussing for a long time and needs for our downtown, but I'm really just wondering if this county money could be directed towards, towards like major things that are going to be really sustained over, like, a long, a long time. Like, I mean, I wonder if we can use some of that money, say, for the planning of the, of the downtown, you know, the town center. I wonder if they can give use for public, public health and safety initiatives, like, like the crosswalk discussions we've been having, and trees, and, you know, things that we know create safer communities. I'm still glad that we're, I think I saw notice that the Infrastructure Committee is working on standards for the public amenities that are, you know, adjacent to the businesses and the restaurants. And so I suppose funding could help make those kind of like more, more permanent and more sustainable. So. Yeah. I generally favor this, yeah. I, I definitely, I think we should put in the, the plan for the town center as well. I think that all of these pedestrian improvements and things that we've been talking about would all make sense to go in there as well.
Can I just, I guess, ask a question for Samantha? I mean, the turnaround on this is so tight, and you have so much on your plate. Is this something that we can help author or collect data or information?
I would be very open to that, and I appreciate that offer.
So, yeah, Cindy, I, I think council members, there's one, okay, there's one more suggestion that I wanted to make, which is based on the, the grant criteria. One of the things the county wants is to expand, they have a list of criteria, you know, either your grant has them or not, and if you have one that, you know, makes your grant much more attractive to them, your proposal. One of them is, is expanding internet access. So I'm going to propose that we look at what it would take to put in free Wi-Fi in the downtown area. That would, that's the only thing I'd be coming up with on their list that we could incorporate, and it seems to fit in with sort of getting more people downtown.
An actual, now, I never actually got around to asking Samantha this question, but an actual thing that would really benefit people's access to this area is if we could somehow improve the cell tower service in this area. Because like, the, the, I don't know about other carriers, but the Verizon service in Norworth in this area is horrible.
Do you know what I just noticed? There's a brand new mini tower on top of a light pole down by the new Norworth shops at Montgomery and North Norworth Avenue. And there, I noticed that they're beginning to locate those kinds of.
Again, I don't know the details of this.
It's not something.
Yeah, I'm happy to speak to, speak to that for a minute. Yeah, to actually Michelle Carroll's credit, when she was looking at our IT consultant last summer, one of the people that she brought in, that was one of the concerns we expressed. And he showed us a map of the, of the cell towers in the area, and it was shocking for Verizon, which I'll admit, full disclosure, I'm a Verizon customer. The nearest Verizon tower is actually down by the Schuylkill River. So compared to AT&amp;T and T-Mobile and Sprint, who all have ones much closer to, to Norworth. So it's not people's, I'm not trying to promote any particular cell company, but it's not people's imagination that there is a difference in Verizon service compared to other ones. And I think, to what Bob mentioned, I think the realistic solution, we're obviously not, you know, cell companies are moving away from building the larger cell towers, especially as 5G becomes more prevalent. And, yeah, I think finding appropriate locations for the mini antennas, because in a lot of boroughs, you know, you know, I saw this in Doylestown Borough, when I lived there, you know, you don't want to ruin the character of the community by having these mini towers all over the place or in the wrong locations. But I think having those in the right locations is probably a way to address that issue.
I think that's a great point, of free Wi-Fi downtown, actually. We hadn't discussed that. But I think that's a really powerful economic development. If we build a narrative of more and more of our population, our residents are working from home, we want them to say, we're going to take a break from working at their kitchen table and come by soup and a sandwich and coffee and work downtown in our town square. You know, I, I think we could build a really powerful narrative around that and check that out.
Actually, both, both.
That's what I'm saying. We're going to try to get a grant for this. But it's going to involve some research. We'll have to figure out, or we'll have to figure out what it would take to, to do that.
And this is April, end of April?
End of April. Yeah, I mean, we don't, you know, this is a grant proposal, this is a proposal, it doesn't need to be, they're soliciting these proposals privately from community groups, so they're not expecting quite as much of a level of detail as some grants. Although I think as a municipality, we don't get that benefit of the doubt. We may have to be more detailed than, than, say, a church would be, when applying for this grant, or this funding source, and not really calling the grant. Anybody, Michelle or Barbara, anything to add here? No? All right. So I think maybe Cindy and I will continue to move forward with this. If you have ideas or thoughts on things that you think should be included in here, please let the two of us know, and we'll be reaching out as well to some of the, the NBA. I think we're going to.
But if you, if you, there were some criteria that you couldn't figure out anything else that applied except for the internet access, do you have examples, maybe, or a place we could look?
I can, you know, I, well, I can read you the, the rubric.
Yeah, read.
Scoring is, this is, this is one aspect of the scoring, but it's like one-eighth of the, one-eighth of the score is, project addresses a priority issue for pandemic recovery fronts identified by a significant number of community members. Here's the list: affordable housing, mental health or behavioral health, childcare, emergency response, and digital access. So, I mean, we could think of things potentially that involve emergency response, but they wouldn't be connected to sort of the down, near to business development, right? That's an entirely different proposal.
I, I could say something with mental health. I mean, this pandemic has been tremendously stressful on just about everybody. There's, there's levels of depression and, and, and anxiety that are, so if we can somehow, you know, find a tie-in to alleviate that with our population, I think that would be terrific.
They're specifically asking about access to or quality of mental health or behavioral health services or treatment. So I don't, I don't think we can count like outdoor time as a, as a factor here. Samantha?
Maybe if I, if I will allow that, I'm more of a, I do a lot better when I have something to read as opposed to trying to remember what people are. I'm not an auditory learner necessarily. as opposed to trying to remember what people are, I'm not an auditory learner necessarily. Maybe I would suggest that tomorrow we could send the scoring rubric out to everyone on council and then solicit any ideas that folks have once everyone can actually read the rubric.
That's a good idea. Thank you. I'll do that.
Very good of you.
Look forward to more discussion once we all see the same document. Because I admit, this is, you know, this is new to everybody, so. All right, thanks for everyone's contributions here. I'm going to try to, I'll try to get this out by end of April. Last item is a HARB advisory review. Samantha, you want to...
Sure, I'll actually let Michelle Carroll speak to this. I'm really glad to have her as our unofficial sort of staff leaves onto the HARB. So Michelle, maybe you could explain this to council and what action we need them to consider.
Yes, and good evening. The HARB met last Thursday for their first organizational meeting. The office is currently working with the HARB to create two separate applications. There is the certificate of appropriateness and advisory review. The certificate of appropriateness application will be on the HARB agenda. However, the advisory review has a different process. This process is where designated members will hold an advisory review meeting with the applicant. So the building code official notified us this week that there are three advisory review applications that are ready to move forward. But there are currently no members designated by council. After speaking with the chair of the HARB today, he said that all members of the HARB are willing to be designated for the position. And if council decides to designate all members, the chair will assign the members to the applications after they are received. The only member that should not be nominated is Kevin Walsh because he is also the borough's building code official and is involved separately in this process.
Yeah, so basically we need to have somebody in place for these advisory reviews to go forward. And we're under time constraints as to when we could do this.
Who is the chair of the HARB?
It's Dennis, Dennis Mantegna is the chair of the HARB. So what has been proposed is that individual member, if there's an advisory review needed, the message will go out to Dennis if he will assign members of the HARB, one or two, to deal with the advisory review. Okay, I'm seeing a lot of nods over here. Is anybody else, okay. So what we would need to do is just approve the members of the HARB apart from Kevin to be consultants in this regard, to be, I forget the term.
Yeah, forget the actual semantics. I mean, I guess basically they would be the appointees to the HARB advisory.
They would be council's appointees. All right, and...
So moved?
So moved, okay. Any further discussion? Anyone want to say anything else about this? Okay, all those in favor of having the HARB members serve as appointees? Okay, it's unanimous. All right, we have, that wasn't an official action item, but we have two action items on the agenda. First is parking controllers. Samantha and chief, who wants to...
I'll start with the motion first.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I move that our council approve the hiring of Paul Frosch as full-time parking controller and John Doyle as part-time parking controller.
A second?
All right, now let's have the discussion.
Yeah, and I'm going to, I want to first thank Manager Bryant and Chief Gallagher for all the work they've done on this, and I'm going to let them speak to this.
Sure, so chief, if you don't mind, I'll start by speaking big picture and then maybe you can speak to the pros of these two candidates.
Sure, absolutely.
So as council is aware, we've been without a parking controller since November of last year. The parking, ad hoc parking committee took a real close look at the job description for parking controller. And with help and feedback from Chief Gallagher, council then ultimately approved a new job description that better fits the parking study and the recommendations from it. After that, the chief took care of doing the, you know, the borough office handled some advertising for the position. And then the chief reviewed the applications and did interviews for it. Before he speaks to the two specific candidates, I will want to just speak to a minute about this full-time and part-time position. Because most recently, we just had a full-time position. However, it was brought to our attention by Mike Kennedy in just a separate conversation one day that prior to our most recent parking controller, she actually started as a part-time employee because the borough model prior to that was to have a full-time and a part-time individual. And talking with the ad hoc parking committee about it, myself and Chief Gallagher as well, feel there are a number of benefits to bringing that model back. First is in our parking study task force and the Nelson-Neymar parking study recommendations, do call for an expansion of the enforcement hours that we have here in the borough. And with just one full-time person, you could stagger some shifts and that sort of thing. But we really felt that having a part-time person in addition to the full-time person would really allow the borough to properly enforce the parking regulations that we have. Secondly, as I mentioned, we've been without a parking controller since November. And if we had a part-time employee, that would help protect the borough in the event that the full-time employee, you know, wanted to actually take a vacation occasionally, be sick time, or heaven forbid, you know, that person moves on to some other job opportunity. That way the borough has some good coverage, you know, and continue to provide parking enforcement. So that's my thoughts on it, you know, that were discussed with the ad hoc parking committee. All right, Chief Gallagher, if you don't mind, speaking to the qualifications of the two candidates that are proposing for council tonight.
Thank you, Samantha. I appreciate the time and I certainly appreciate your help with this process, in particular missing on your office staff who partnered with me pretty much during this whole time. And the one thing I'd like to say right up front, this is definitely a new chapter for parking enforcement in the borough. We're really looking forward to it. We're very excited. So we have 15 applicants that sent resumes. All of them were very good resumes, very, very good for the position that was posted. We restructured the job description, as everybody knows. I wrote the job description. We had some edits provided from the committee and it went very, very well. And we had a lot of good positive feedback. So those 15 applicants, again, were very good. So there were five candidates that were selected for interview. One of them withdrew for personal reasons. And then four were interviewed via phone extensively. All four were very, very good. They were invited for in-person interviews. Unfortunately, two did not show up for their scheduled interviews, which is unfortunate. We had the final interviews on Monday, the 21st of February. And that's when we arrived at the two candidates, which were Paul Frosch, number one. He came in number one, and John Doyle came in second. Paul is currently a police officer in University of Penn and was also an Allied Universal security officer that dealt with parking management issues in University of Penn's campus before he joined the University of Penn Police Department. And he had a unique ability and really actually basically told me and explained to me the repeated problems that he had with confronting parking situations in liberal parking. And his personal traits were outstanding, the way he handled them and how professional he was. And basically, the professional engagement that he had with the person that would ask him something as innocent as a MyAD to park here. And his way that he approached that was so refreshing that I was caught by him immediately. That this is definitely the type of personality that we want in the borough. And more importantly, and this is something I expressed to Samantha for a long time, how are you going to represent the Norbert Police Department to those that we serve so proudly? You know, how are you going to represent the office of the chief? How are you going to represent that police station? That's the takeaway that we're really looking for. Both of them undoubtedly fit that role without a doubt. So Paul has accepted the position. Obviously, we're going through the formality tonight. Mr. Doyle, you know, my compliments to him. He was an auxiliary officer in Warrington. He was a part-time school crossing guard in Lower Marine. And he was also a SEPTA bus driver for many, many years. And he was extremely well-qualified for the job and had some great ideas on how to approach things. So we started to talk this out and we realized after speaking to Mike Kennedy that we really wanted to go into a new version, a new application for parking enforcement in the borough. And we wanted to make sure that those things that were left on the table before in terms of unenforceable hours after hours, and Saturdays, obviously Sundays excluded, that we really wanted to gain compliance with the borough code in terms of parking enforcement as we restructured. So that's how we arrived at these two candidates. They're excellent. And we thank all the candidates for applying. And they are both prepared to start, probably Mr. Doyle earlier a little bit than Mr. Frosch because he's got to give notice to the University of Penn Police Department. So we're hoping to get them both started by Monday, March the 21st. And we don't want to split them up because we have to send them through UPS training with United Public Safety. We have to get them to our uniform vendor and we have to deal with some onboarding with the office. So we want to make sure they start at the same time so we don't have to do it two times over. So we're very excited.
And there's something about each candidate that the chief had mentioned that struck me that I want to emphasize for council. You know, as anyone who's been down in West Philly and University City knows, you know, a lot of their security personnel are also responsible for, you know, this sort of brand ambassador concept that we want from the parking controller position. You know, I know in my time at U Penn, you know, there were folks that you could reasonably go to and say like, hey, I'm a little bit lost where such-and-such, or as the chief mentioned, you can ask, hey, where's parking here? Can I park here? And I think that's another big thing that we're looking for in the position that it sounds like Mr. Frosch has. And then with Mr. Doyle, something that struck me was, again, just thinking of providing staffing under adverse situations with his background as a crossing guard. You know, we made the decision that we're working with two crossing guards right now. You know, in the event of either of those folks were ever sick or had missed time or, you know, again, family vacations or family matters, you know, potentially Mr. Doyle might be someone we could consider in the future to help maybe fill some gaps in that if we ever needed those services.
And they both live in very close proximity to the borough.
So is it fair to say that having the second person would probably generate enough revenue and additional fines to cover that cost?
Yeah, the parking committee actually had me recently do some work in trying to figure out the borough's revenue and expenses from our parking programs and enforcement. And, yes, since I've had to do that exercise recently, I do confidently feel, yes, that would be the case.
It would also improve compliance.
And then the second question is, what was Mr. Frosch's role at Penn? I mean, he wasn't, was he a police officer or was he focused on parking?
No, he was a police officer who had a lot of parking issues that he dealt with, not only in his role as a police officer for the University of Pennsylvania, but also as an Allied Universal private security goodwill ambassador working on the campus of the University of Pennsylvania before he became there. So he spent the majority of his career down on a higher education campus, you know, at University of Pennsylvania. And the primary responsibilities that he had in a lot of ways, especially in his previous job, had to do a lot with parking assistance and what he would do. And he basically transferred that experience into his role as a police officer and he handled those things very well. So we were certainly very excited about how he handled things, as well as John Doyle. We're not minimizing John Doyle's input whatsoever. But we're very excited and we're thinking overall, since we haven't had any revenue in parking since Friday, November the 5th, that in its own way, once these unenforceable hours from previous times and Saturday hours, this is definitely going to be a dawn of a whole new day for the department, you know, for the police and also in terms of uncaptured hours.
Just as a comment, I appreciate you just acknowledging that in a lot of ways, it's the parking controller that has the most face time with the entire community. I mean, more than any of us or staff. So I appreciate you really kind of judging personality, de-escalation. You know, I would love to, as we talked about communication, just like we did for you and others, like to do a picture and a welcome and really introduce these folks to say you're an important member of our community.
And we want them to be a face of the community. And that was the one thing that really stood out during the interviews, that the one thing I emphasized to both candidates, you are the first point of contact for us when somebody wants to go to a restaurant or looking for directions to the municipal lot or they need assistance to go to a local church. You are the first point of contact. So not only are you a parking authority, you are basically our goodwill ambassador, someone that's going to help people, that they're going to feel certain comforts in with. So as much as we were looking for a skill set in the resume, we were looking for personal traits as well. So, and that has a lot to do with the approach that we took during the entire interview process. And it went very well and I congratulate both candidates. And I think that this is something that is going to work out extremely well.
Thank you.
All right, I'm not seeing any other comments, so let's move to a vote. Do we want to separate this out in each, I think we could just...
Page it.
So all those in favor of hiring Paul Frosch as the full-time parking controller and John Doyle as part-time parking controller? All right, it's unanimous. Congratulations to Mr. Frosch and Mr. Doyle. And I thank you, Samantha and Chief Gallagher.
Thank you.
I guess Missy is to be thanked for being the office representative.
There is one note, actually, I did want to bring to council's attention with the part-time parking controller. So when we approved the full-time, because there's job description, a pay range was set as part of that. However, for part-time parking controller, we don't have a pay range set. So just to make sure council's comfortable, looking at what the full-time person makes, myself and Chief Gallagher thought an appropriate pay range would be $22 to $25 per hour for the part-time parking controller.
No, that sure makes a point. I take away, don't need a second vehicle fully on?
No.
No, because the other shows, I don't need that.
That's not going to be necessary. This, the one thing that we want about our borough in terms of parking, as well as police that we've demonstrated for the past four years, is a walkability approach. So with that in mind, the one vehicle will certainly be sufficient. And I suspect, and I'm pretty confident at the same time, that these two employees will be able to share their responsibilities extremely well.
All right.
Also, if I might, having two parking controllers will make special situations like snow days when we have to do a lot of enforcement and removal. We can double up and have manpower to really enforce snow zones and special situations.
I don't see any concerns with that salary range. Okay. Moving on to the IB, infrastructure.
I move that Borough Council adopt Resolution 202205 for a local share account statewide grant.
Second, all right, it's a second? Okay. Samantha, have an explanation?
Sure, so as council discussed a previous meeting about the nature of this grant, you know, it's a rare no-match required state grant from state peaming funds that's now being offered to all municipalities to apply for for the first time ever. Looking at the grant requirements and, you know, the research that was done about the general grant award amounts and such, you know, we all felt that the most competitive application the borough could do during the timeframe of the grant application would be for the improvements to 100 Conway and 80 Windsor that are soon going to be underway. So that is the grant application we want to work on. This resolution calls for the borough to ask for $250,000 from the state grant program in order to assist with those endeavors to make the building more accessible and more energy efficient. And that includes things we talked about, you know, like replacing HVAC, replacing the windows, you know, making the parts that KCB eight them not to be ADA compliant, to be compliant. Those are some of the big ones that come to mind.
Anyone have any questions, comments? All right, all those in favor of Resolution 2205 for the local share account statewide grant? Okay, it's unanimous. Okay, committee reports. Michelle, infrastructure.
Okay, hello. I will keep this very brief because the meeting's running long. We spent a good chunk of our time discussing the standards for the semi-permanent outdoor dining. outdoor dining structures, which we are now calling streeteries, or at least I am, and I hope everybody will join me because it's so cute. Streeteries. And so I didn't make it up. I stole it. But anyway, we don't have final design guidelines for a couple of reasons. I started us off with an excessive amount of detail because that's the way I roll. And we spent a lot of the time carving it down, figuring out which things would actually be issues that we'd be flagging for Kevin to deal with in the permitting process, which is really what a lot of it was. And then we still need to coordinate with public health and safety. But I think that our next pass-through will give us a final product that we can bring back to council. And hopefully it'll be in the kind of shape where we can maybe just tweak it a little bit and move it along and improve it. We reviewed a request for a variety of pieces of snow equipment that our Public Works Manager, Jeff Felden, submitted, but he was not able to attend the meeting. So we did have some discussion with Manager Bryant, but we did not, you know, reach, reach any real conclusions. We had some productive discussion and we did make a suggestion as a committee that public, that our Public Works Manager consult with our EAC, who has also expressed a willingness to have a conversation because they may be able to help give some guidance on, you know, how to integrate some of our environmental goals in our, in our snow equipment purchases. So they'll have that conversation. I think Samantha's facilitating some more and I imagine we will take that request up again at our next meeting. And the other thing I wanted to sort of bring to you was that we had a discussion, and I'm going to further punt this to Manager Bryant, to maybe just explain it a little bit better than I can, about a transportation community development initiative grant. That's a TC DI grant that's through the DVR PC, Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission. And basically this would be a grant that would help us to pay for the, well, what we already know from past experience can be very expensive, traffic evaluation that we need to do, sort of delay the groundwork for an active transportation plan, for reconsidering, you know, safety and circulation of our roads. You really need to do a, like a full evaluation and assessment of traffic circulation in order to sort of make multimodal traffic plans work. And we already, we already know from past experience that that can get pretty expensive. This is a way that we can get some grant funding for that. Panone, I think, I think Panone may have actually brought this grant to our attention or if not, they are in any event partnering with us and assisting us in putting that together. And Samantha, what else can you add to that?
Yeah, as you mentioned, due credit where it's due, our traffic engineer, Mike Schneider, actually brought this to our attention after hearing from infrastructure and public safety. Some of the conversations that have continually kind of sprung out from our comprehensive plan about traffic circulation audit in the borough, complete streets, active transportation, our, you know, bike pilots and long-term bike planning. So I think that's going to be a great discussion. They didn't have a proposal for the infrastructure meeting, but they have a specific scope of work for public health and safety tomorrow. I'm really looking forward to that conversation.
What's the timeline on that grant? When is that?
Yeah, I believe that one's another one that's due in April. But I believe that's one where, given the, the technical nature of it, that's one that probably Panone is going to be doing admittedly most of the, most of the work in putting that together.
All right. And yeah, those are all items that are in our comp plan. So it's good to see those continue to be addressed. All right, is that anything else, Michelle? Or is that, looks like that's it?
Nope, that's it.
All right, thank you. Finance and administration.
So I'll be brief too, because there is something that we do need to talk about because it's time sensitive. FNA just reviewed the business privilege tax collection update. We had talked about this really pre-pandemic. Mona has spearheaded it and then the pandemic hit and we thought, let's not prioritize collecting tax funds. Unbeknownst to us, Andrew Bryant came in and actually picked up on that process and really just clarified, formed a relationship, updated. So when we kind of re-inquired about it, it had already been done. We collect about $150,000 annually from our business privilege tax. We've re-discussed the fact that we are not shifting a business privilege tax to people working from home or remotely. If you run a company out of your house or a business, right, not work remotely, then yes, you would take business privilege checks. That does not qualify for remote workers. The next quick item was the scan tax proposal. The Friends of Norbert History had reached out and said, hey, we'd really like to make sure nothing gets lost in this process because there are some documents that you really want to retain, the primary source and not just a scan. I don't think this is anything council needs to be involved with, the office and Friends of Norbert History taking care of. If you want to add on to anything.
Yeah, we had a, we had a fantastic meeting, Michelle and, Michelle Carroll and I with Dennis Montagnon and George Lawnstor earlier this week and talked through a lot of it. I'm really glad to have their support and advice on it.
Great, thank you. We spent the majority of the meeting actually with the counsel of John Walco, of looking at dispersion ordinance, which did not have support in the majority of FNA, and also F, 5A restricted business zoning. When we developed the foreign-based zoning, right, that eliminated restricted uses of businesses, right? So things like pawn shops, payday loans, smoke shops, adult businesses are all per our current zoning allowed downtown, by right. The thought is, given the new development, the changing of storefronts, this really probably is the time for us because most, most, every other municipality, as Mr. Walco described, have these restricted businesses. You can't outlaw them, right? So you have to allow them in some place in your community, but you can restrict whatever. And FNA and Mr. Walco and Manager Bryant, I could say, agreed with restricting businesses in 5A seems very appropriate. I have a list of standard kind of restricted businesses. We also solicited feedback from individual council members and the planning commission. I'd like to review that list of us now, add to anything we think should be included in this, hand it off to Mr. Walco and then have something for council to advertise and vote on, you know, as we begin change in our downtown and our business districts. So is it, is it okay if I read this list? Maybe it's not long.
Sure.
And we can add to it or someone can strike one that they don't think is appropriate?
Go ahead.
Okay, these are kind of standard, by the way, in other municipalities. Off-track betting parlors, auto tag services, adult businesses, and Mr. Walco would define what these are. I think that we, we probably can imagine what those are. Bail bonds, cash for gold, firearm sales, marijuana dispensaries, pawn shops, payday loans, tattoo parlors, tobacco or smoke shops.
So presumably you would be grandfathered?
Yes, you would be grandfathered. So I guess my thought is maybe.
Cindy, after cash for gold, I didn't hear all of them. Would you mind reading the list after cash for gold? Because I missed some. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Firearms sales.
Okay.
Marijuana dispensaries, pawn shops, payday loans, tattoo parlors, tobacco and smoke shops. So perhaps it's easier if someone says immediately, I would strike that and then we could gather, I would add this. Is there anything on here council would strike?
I guess I don't really see why we wouldn't want to be able to get a license plate or apply for a license plate.
Well, you put it on Montgomery Ave, just not downtown.
That's fine, okay, that's fine.
So yeah, the idea is all of these would be prohibited in the downtown area and they'd be allowed in 5B, which is.
Montgomery Ave is fine, that's close.
Okay. Anybody, anything that should be struck from this list?
I don't see anybody yet. Oh, Barbara, is that a hand? I can't tell.
Could you just read them again? I, it's really hard. You go through them fast and it's hard to say, okay, 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 or wait, what was that? Thanks.
I'm sorry. This duck mask is really doing its job. Off-track betting parlor, auto tag service, adult businesses, bail bonds, cash for gold, firearm sales, marijuana dispensaries, pawn shops, payday loans, tattoo parlors, tobacco or smoke shops.
Question, just clarification. Marijuana dispensaries would include medical as well as recreational? I mean, forthcoming potential recreational legalization in Pennsylvania?
Correct.
Okay.
Andrew?
Um, if a new bar wanted to open, would that fall under adult?
No, 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 you're going to make me say the adult businesses there, aren't you?
Oh, come on.
No, I, it's important to clarify. Things like strip clubs, sexual toys or.
Yeah.
Okay.
Like if a, if a new bar, just a straight bar wanted to open, it would not be included?
No, totally fine. And in the actual, in the actual restriction, Mr. Walco will detail this type of adult businesses. So I don't have to say them again. But thank you for clarifying. Yes, not bars, my God.
The other question is, um, so there's a, there's a shop with a sign in the window that I don't, that looks like it's been rented, but I don't understand what kind of business it's going to be.
So that was my understanding is none of this would restrict that business.
Okay.
Yes, it is not in fact a marijuana.
Yeah, we don't, we don't think it has anything to do with.
So back to your, so back to your question, Cindy, the only thing that I might consider striking from this list, and I might be in minority, is tattoo parlors. I'm not really sure that I see them as being potentially problematic in the way that the other things are. But, but, but when I think about this, I really think about what does our community mainly want to sort of have our downtown feel like? And for the most part, I'm pretty much comfortable with this list. I mean, because you can open these businesses up in 5B, so.
Agreed. And I have to say, Michelle, I would probably also add marijuana dispensaries. I think it's about to be legal. I think we have alcohol downtown. This was a heated.
No.
But I don't think it reflects what the community would want. We can always keep in mind, you can apply for conditional use.
Look, you can?
You could, I think, yeah, Walco said you can. Or like a waiver.
The other question I have is there's a new dispute happening in Radnor Township about with the CBD and the new, there's a, there's another.
Because it's a K.
Oh.
Yeah, it's Delta Eight and.
Kraton.
Kraton. So we, that, they are both legal. So there's nothing we can do to that. Under tobacco and smoke shops, we, we can clarify that those are restricted in 5A. We can't outlaw it, so.
Okay.
Oh, no, but I think what, weren't you asking, Andrea, if, if shops that like Delta Eight and Kraton would be included under, I mean, would they be, would they be part of this dispersion ordinance such that they would be excluded from 5A?
Right.
What category would they fit under?
So this is not the dispersion ordinance, just to clarify, this is a.
Okay.
Yes, we can outline that under the tobacco and smoke shop and qualify.
Okay.
Those two things.
I'm thinking about the businesses along Montgomery Avenue and like, is there anything there that we would say, okay, if you're going to, you know, we're allowing that business, but we'd really like it to only be along Montgomery Avenue? And the one that pops to my mind is the psychic reading person. I don't even know if that's really still in business, but the sign is still there. And I'm like, would we want that on Havaford Avenue?
He should have foreseen that you would ask that question.
You can put that in.
Yeah, I can add.
It's kind of a personal service.
Yeah, okay.
So I just want to add one thing, if it's all right, because this is something that I've had, I've had a couple of people that I know in this community already talk to me specifically about their concerns that recreational marijuana dispensaries, they, they believe they may get sort of fast-tracked and approved very quickly, more quickly than we think. And they've expressed to me the concern that they believe there's a trend towards folks now starting to sort of stake out places and rent them and just sort of hold on to them for the day when that gets approved and, and sort of try to grandfather the use in by having a lease in place already. I don't know if that, if that's something that you discussed with John legally, whether they'd be on solid ground, but my sense is that if we are going to move these restrictions forward, we, you know, there's a sense in which, I mean, I've had folks in the community talking about it. I think they would appreciate that we did it sooner than later.
I agree, Michelle. I didn't ask that specific question, but this is why this is coming before you now because I'm going to send this off to John Walco so we have a prepare for the next meeting so we can act quickly. I did not ask about if you've already signed a lease, but I will follow up with that question when I email this evening.
All right. So in the interest of.
Okay, thanks.
I think I'd like to move forward. I think they have your support in moving this forward and.
Yeah. Should I add gas station? I mean, I don't know that there's room for a gas station, but is that something?
We asked.
You know what? Then why don't we put it in there? You know, if we don't think that's going to happen, then let's just do it and it won't affect anyone if people don't want a gas station downtown.
There was one downtown for many years.
There was.
Richard.
Yeah, they just finished cleaning up all the mess last year.
Okay.
All right. Do you have anything else from FNA?
No, that's all.
Okay. Let's move on to public health and safety.
Okay, so we are meeting tomorrow at 9:00 AM. In our last meeting, we, we discussed the fleet renewal for the police department and electric vehicles. We also have a plan for meeting more regularly with the fire, the fire department. And so we're going to work out a schedule so that a member of our committee can attend their board meetings and then either the fire marshal or the fire chief can attend our meetings. So we're going to have more, more communication, which is made possible partly by the change of our meeting time, now that we're meeting during the day. We had an initial discussion of the police advisory committee and that was very productive and we're going to talk more about that tomorrow and then we could bring that idea to council. We also, Michelle, we do have our, the streeteries on our agenda. We're going to talk about the minimum safety standards and, you know, looking ahead to April and May, we're going to be connecting with Jesse Blital from the EAC and with Rick Trellis from the Shade Tree Commission to coordinate with those committees. So that's it. You know, we'll be, we'll be picking up tomorrow at 9:00.
All right. Pick her up. Finally, parking.
Sure. We expect to have an ordinance that governs parking in the municipal lots as well as permitting towing, authorizing towing in the borough to you, hopefully, for our March Business Meeting, for you to consider whether it should be advertised or not. So just so everybody knows, there isn't anything in our code right now that authorizes towing. So this will be a new section. We're continuing our work on the residential parking and we are, we have a date in mind to be coming to you at the May workshop meeting with our recommendation on that. And hopefully we will be able to get through all of the details that we've been working on so that we have that. Our next meeting is this coming Tuesday, March 8th at 9:00 AM. We've been meeting twice a month, but in March, we're not going to be meeting a second time. Our next meeting will be, well, we'll then pick up meeting again in April, the second and fourth Tuesdays, and we're moving to 8:00 AM. Right now, we're at 9:00 AM, but we're moving to 8:00. So feel free to join us if you, it'll be up at 8 o'clock.
All right. Thanks, Barbara. That is it for. Uh, that is it for committee reports. Uh, does anyone have any announcements to the council? All right.
Just want, I, I just want to remind everyone, uh, the Business Association has a leprechaun hunt coming up, so, uh, get ready and, uh, that is, uh, I have, check the, Barbara, the line for the specific date.
All right. Thank you. Take a motion for adjournment?
Circle.
All right, all those in favor? All right, okay, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone. There's no other.